Doesn't want to or doesn't have?
I think Susan made sure that he.
All right. Let's go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. All members of council are present tonight with a council polling being virtually. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Motion from Councilor Haugen, do I have a second?
Second by councillor.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All but comments, is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Well, complete step forward to the microphone and just state your name and the city you live in. You can sit down, yeah.
My name is Mary Semarak and I own, I own the building behind the car wash. It's where Neilan rents his stuff. I also own a business Mogomor, which is over at the Grocery Outlet Plaza. I'm very concerned about our lack of police presence. My husband and I had to confront people breaking into our store at three in the morning. And this was for a whole month. We had to stay up every night and watch the cameras. Very upsetting. There's a huge lack of presence and I don't know what is going to be done to fix it. I've seen a lot of vagrants. I've, these people that actually broke into our store came from McMinnville and an hour away. You, and, and it was the same group that kept breaking in, but that doesn't matter. There's always people online. So I'm, I'm very concerned about the fact that I have people coming in all the time and telling me about how their stuff is being stolen. Elderly people, young people, I mean, everybody's getting cameras, but it doesn't help, you know, when you have a camera to watch people take your stuff. So, not that the police are going to be there when these things happen, but it's been a very interesting saga for, it's been the last 12 months. I don't know what's changed, but I do know with the pandemic, our values have gone crazy and that's part of the draw. I, I do know that I'm hearing a lot of things happening to people, a lot of other things that shouldn't be happening to people and I think we need to get it, get something going where maybe neighborhood watch programs. But we do need a bigger police force presence. There isn't one. You know, between three o'clock in the morning, I'm listening for that thing to roll on that we have to go and confront them. So, we know it's on our plate because we know there's nobody there. So. That's it.
Thank you very much. Did your job just get harder, Chief?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Fair. Do we have her call? So that she can coordinate with the chief and potentially come up with a temporary, at least a temporary solution?
He owns the, the store. I bought most of my Game of Thrones videos from her when she was back behind the theater. But, you know, we do need to, there is an issue that's going on. I think everyone knows, notices it. And so. Need to figure it out.
Yeah, currently we don't have 24 hour coverage. I think that's known to most people. Not, we're working on staffing. We have one, one out of any thing goes well by the end of the month, so. We're going to put that officer or officers to get their 24 hour.
Ask one more question. Are you noticing that there's a pattern in a specific time of day or any specific day of the week? And is it every week or I'm just looking for a way to potentially? Is it all, I mean, how often is it? How, how many times over what? The reason that I ask is if we can establish patterns or trends, why we're low on staffing, we might be able to be creative with some sort of other solution. That was the basis of my question, just to give it a little bit of context.
Random.
Thank you.
3 a.m. patrols. That would keep them off guard. They wouldn't know what nights they're, they're out. Thank you again very much for bringing this up. Go ahead.
Is, is there any other law enforcement agency that could help us out during these times? The county sheriff, St. Hill's police?
I think everyone's battling staffing issues and urgent stuffs. I'm meeting with other department heads, but I will inquire to see what their resources are.
I mean, this is a real concern. I mean, I mean, it's not just something incidental. It's, it's a big deal. I mean, someone could lose their life in a situation like this and, and we don't want to go on record as not addressing it. Because it's, so I think we want to go on record that we are going to address that, get back to you, anybody else that has that kind of concern or experience like you've already experienced. So, anyway, that's just my take on it. I think we need to be real proactive in this manner.
I agree.
Um, I just wanted to kind of second what the chief is saying. I know people that are just on the edge of city limits and they're more in, you know, county. And, and they're calling and, and whether the sheriff isn't showing up or OSP or, you know, we have agreements where we can support and help, but.
Absolutely.
No, but you know what I mean? I mean, it's.
And there's agreements where depending on the call and what the call is, it's whether they're going to help. You know, it all depends on what they're doing, what their calls for services. Say how, say, say how if that's two people on 24 hours a day, they're dealing with something.
If.
Have to deal with everything.
Speak into the microphone. There's people online that might not be able to hear.
It all depends on the, the other agency's staffing, but yes, if we have people on and OSP needs assistance, we'll help them or if the county needs help.
Yeah.
Priority is here, just like every city or county.
Thank you.
Make one more comment.
Go ahead.
I know that the city is trying to get the staffing backup in the police department, so that is an ongoing effort and a focus. So, want to be clear, you know, that everybody's listening, that that is a focus of the city and we are actively working on that. My hope was maybe that we could identify something that could be proactive in the between time, but put our heads together and see if we can come up with anything.
Thank you, councillor.
Anything else? Councilor Haugen.
Eric, just a question. They, they repeated at 3 a.m. So those are, but we're covering the camera. There, there a way?
Is there a, is there a way you can hook that up where so, so you probably didn't call 911 when you, on these, any of these occasions, correct?
We're calling 911, but.
You were, but, but there was no response.
Well, okay, so, so, so the third time after we were broken, so we were, we were broken into and then two weeks later, 3 a.m. They broke my door and we didn't know about that particular one, but they were, they broke my door. I couldn't get in. They were jimming it, trying to get it open. The two weeks after that is when my husband and I confronted him. 3 a.m. We saw four people in the camera and before they hit the alarm system, we got in our cars and rushed over. And my husband confronted him. I went around the corner and the kid was coming around the corner. I almost hit him with my car because it was 3 a.m. He's running, he's running away. And just wanted to scare him so they won't come back.
So, what, 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 was there a response though from?
Yes, and actually that time there was a response and that was only because he was dropping off evidence at, or at his apartment. The only reason he was there.
Okay, great.
He came within five minutes. It was Sean. He went around the block and he found clothes and the clothes had a receipt in them. That's how they figured out who it was. And they intercepted a phone call from Chevron when he called his buddy to come pick him up. That's how we figured out who it was that kept breaking in.
All right, thank you. That provides some context for us. Thank you.
Police officer did excellent, excellent work finding out who it was.
Thank you.
Excellent. And I, I did notice that you guys added the, the screen, which.
$10,000.
Unfortunately, yeah. It sucks that you have to do that.
We think it was the same guy that broke in again at that location, at our new location. So, um, we think it's, it's going to be all boys, but I mean, it could have been, you know, you don't know.
Yeah.
Guy in a dark thing with a hood on. So, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I just know that I'm getting woken up a lot at 3 a.m.
Maybe it'll, being able to pinpoint that time, I think will be very helpful for our interim chief to be able to devise strategies to work with you and other business owners and community members to hopefully try to quell this problem.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward to the consent agenda. Oh wait.
I think Dan on.
Oh, Dan. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, I had one, yes, I had one question with, what's the policy of the police department? Do you, do you respond to false alarms or any type of burglar alarms?
Yes, we get called, we respond. Sometimes we don't know that they're false.
Yeah, do you call then, for any side of alarm, do you have a policy?
I haven't got through all the policies, so it's a police response. If we get a call for an alarm, we won't know it's a false until we get there unless we get canceled on the way.
Yeah, I understand that. But you do respond to side on alarms?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that everything, Mr. McCoy?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a good evening. All right, anybody else with public comments? All right, moving forward, consent agenda, the August 2nd, 2021 City Council Work Session. August 16th, 2021 City Council Meeting Minutes. August 26th, City Council Executive Session Meeting. August 27th, 2021 City Council Executive Session and Meeting and Appointment of Robert Backus as full member of the Economic Development Committee. Do I have a motion?
I won't.
Moved by councillor Haugen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council President Grayson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. There's probably a delay with Josh, so that's an aye. Yes, somewhere, no. Um, old business, ordinance number 897, Amendments to the Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04, Council Meetings. This is a continued public hearing. We'll reopen the public hearing or continue the public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in regards to the council minutes or council meetings? All right, seeing no more public input. Let's go ahead and move, close the public hearing. Any discussion by council?
I have a question.
Councillor Soski.
Alex, in regards to meetings, council meetings starting at 6 p.m., work sessions would be.
So the idea would be that if there was a work session, it would still start at six, but if there's a regular meeting, it could start at six. And then the other thought is that if, if everything starts at six, let's say the work session, we guess wrong and we think it's going to take 45 minutes, takes 15. Well, you can just, you could just roll, roll into the meeting in that respect instead of waiting until seven. It just gives you a little bit more flexibility. It, and it was just something Peter and I had discussed. It's by no means anything, obviously, you have to do. Um, it was just, it was just a thought to avoid those evenings where maybe, you know, despite our best guess, we miscalculate and there's a bunch of time lag in between or something like that.
So, so if it says that a work session with a meeting to follow, then that means if you guys really need 80 minutes in order to get through that work session versus cutting it off at seven and then having to pick it up again in two weeks when it's not fresh on your mind. Um, or whether it's, there have been evenings where it's been 10 minutes and then it's been a 15 minute break. And so this is something I've seen used in other jurisdictions that I think has just led to increased efficiency and increased flexibility for the council to make sure you both have adequate time and also not wasted time.
One of the reasons I ask is I really appreciate when public comes and joins us. And so if they're dedicating their time to say, I'm going to come on a Monday night at six o'clock. Then all of a sudden the work session falls into 7:30 and they're waiting for the actual council meeting to start. There's kind of this inconsistency of a potential start time of when council meetings could start because the work sessions, um, take more time. So, um, I'm very much open to the idea. I just want to make sure that our citizens have that opportunity to engage, interact with council as those council meetings are designed, because I think somebody, an individual is taking that time. We want to be mindful of that as well.
Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, this wouldn't change their ability to still do that, correct?
No, if, if there was a, if there was an agenda that seemed like it was going to get a lot of public, um, involvement, then, you know, you could cut off the work session early. Or if you thought there might be items on, um, they're usually items on your agenda that are more administrative in nature that aren't of interest to the, um, general public. So, again, you could reorder your agenda in order to make this work. This would just be a way to, on an evening where there was not a lot of members of the community, if you needed that 20 extra minutes, you could take it. Um, or if there are items of the agenda that are administrative, you can handle them in that time between like 6:20 and.
I do appreciate the flexibility, so I think the building in the flexibility is a value, so I appreciate that being proposed. Thank you for the explanation.
My comment went to that as well. Only because people have busy lives and, and they want to share their input and their thoughts. Um, if they know at seven o'clock I can give public comment. Um, I think, I think it, the way it is right now lends itself to being better for the public to do that or easier, more accessible because, again, they could be waiting around, you know, the hour and a half. Or, oops, the meeting started at 6:30 and I completely missed my chance to connect with city council. Um, I guess I could send an email, but it meant a lot for me to come and, and speak in front of them in person. I just, I, I don't want missed opportunities. I don't want them to slip through the crack and then people show up and, all right, we already started and your time to talk was 35 minutes ago. We got a little ahead of ourselves. I just, I, I don't think that's necessarily good business sometimes when we are in the business of serving the public and we want to hear from them. If there's a way that either, I mean, I don't want to say we stop work sessions or stop whatever we're doing and it's seven o'clock every time. We're always accepting public comment. But if there's some way to make it consistent for the public, I don't know.
I have the same thought as, uh, Council President Grayson too. Would there be a way that we could also, um, do public comment at the end? And then it would address that aspect, so we could do it at the beginning? And maybe at the end, if there's somebody that wants to and at least allow that, because I just, I have the same concern. I just don't want to interfere with somebody's ability to give public comment.
You could gavel into the meeting and take public comment and then after that return to the work session. So you could have a time certain on public comment. Um, or you could, you know, I mean, you have flexibility in, in how to order your agenda in a way that would work for members of the public as well as yourself. So, again, the, this, this wasn't to, you know, the, the intent of this was to give you guys maximum flexibility. It wasn't to make it more difficult for the members of the public. Um, whatever the, whatever you guys want to do, there's an apparatus that we can build into it to meet that objective. As we were, as Alex and I were talking, and recently there's been a lot more public comment, but there was a period of time where we just wouldn't have any members of the public attend the meetings and sometimes the work sessions would go five, 10 minutes. And so if, if we ever were to kind of return to those days, um, this would make it, um, easier, I think, for you guys to be as efficient as possible. While preserving their people's need in order to directly communicate with you.
We did see examples where public comment was given at the end of meetings too, so. We did see that.
I just don't want to just push it just to the end because people.
Sure, and I don't, and I don't.
Trying to.
You don't want to keep people waiting till the end, but, um, but we, we did see that. I mean, I, I like the idea councillor Miller saying, you know, at the end of the meeting, someone's still hanging around and they had missed the public comment. Just, we're about to wrap up tonight's meeting. Last call for any public comment for those, I mean.
Go back into public comments right before we do calendar announcements. I mean, that's just arranging the agenda. Yeah.
Just like the consistency, if the public knows seven o'clock will be heard. You know, it's just too confusing sometimes to know, oh, they started at six, but then I should get on at six because it might take 10 minutes or it might take 45. I don't want to miss my chance. It is not convenient.
If we started early, we still break at seven o'clock for public comments?
Yes.
Yeah, and if you, we, if you have a public hearing, you can also do that at a time certain. So, I mean, the, the idea is to, is to give the public an opportunity to meaningfully participate, whether it's a hearing or public comment. But then.
But not waste the 20 minutes sometimes where you have a short work session.
Right, that's all, yeah.
Yeah.
It was just more flexibility. But again, the other thing is too, is we can just leave the language as is.
For me, I think that personally it makes sense to do what's proposed, but still do public comment at a certain time at seven because I think that's going to give the ability for our public to participate in the most efficient way for them when they've worked all day and they're trying to go home to their family. So if they're able to plan for seven o'clock public comments, I feel like that's going to be most advantageous for them. Um, but I do like the proposal, the idea that, you know, we start earlier. I just feel like, um, we need to make sure that we address this other piece. And that is that public comment always happens at a certain time so people can, and their schedule on that.
I agree.
So, so we, there is actually a section we had proposed to add to, um, outline public comment, just make it a little clearer, but we could actually put a time in there, say 7 p.m.
Okay.
I have additional, uh, concern that would be for people who show up to address a particular item on the agenda. And so if they're coming, it happens to be item one on the agenda, but we've already covered item one by the time they arrive at seven o'clock. I'm not real comfortable with that. So, we're concerned with that than I do with public comment.
Yeah, for, on a public hearing. Because not every item on the agenda we take public comment on.
Well, we tell them at the beginning, uh, that your public comments, unless you have, uh, want to speak.
Anything not on the agenda, but, but we don't have a public hearing on every single item in the agenda.
We do, we, but you intimate that we would give them, uh, uh, access to make a public comment.
The nights we do have public.
On the nights we do have public hearings, yeah.
Well, what we said, may, and maybe I'm, I'm all wrong here. It could be, you know, uh, but what we said at the beginning, uh, public comments, uh, unless you have, you want to speak to an item on the agenda?
No, not unless you want to speak. It's, except for items on the agenda.
Okay, so that means they could speak items on the agenda?
And, and I haven't really, I, I haven't really enforced it. But no, they, if there's no public hearing listed on the agenda, there's no public hearing. There's no.
Talking about public hearing, talking about.
They can make comments. If someone has a comment tonight on the 100 year celebration video, they can speak during that time.
No, technically unless I recognize them, it's under how the rules have always been. Unless there's a public hearing, unless we change our policies.
We do, seems like we suggest that they can speak by the way we introduce this at the very beginning of every meeting. That, that would, if I was here to speak at item number three, uh, and I would, what you said, I said, okay, I'll just hang on until item number three comes around and then I can speak to that item. Given there's no public hearing, we don't have to have a public hearing on every item, so.
Oh, but that would be a public hearing. Receiving public input is a public hearing. Might not be a formal one, but that's what that is. I mean, whether it's right or wrong, I'm just, you know, I'm being.
The same page. If somebody wants to speak to an item, uh, that they can do that, right? You, you allow them to do that, is what I'm saying. You, you basically tell them they can do that, but.
No, I don't. I don't say that, I say that you can't, and it used to be just written on here. It's not anymore. It used to be public comments.
Or anything not on.
It's on page two, F under public comment. It's one says, "One period of public comment will be reserved for every regular meeting of the council, which will not exceed a maximum of 30 minutes unless the majority of the council president vote to extend the time." Then two, "If a member of the public wishes to speak on an item that's scheduled for a public hearing at the same meeting, the speaker shall wait until public hearing, public comment shall be used to testify about a quasi judicial land, shall not be used to testify about a quasi judicial landing."
That's, that's a different matter, you know, we're not, I'm talking about just items on the agenda. There's not a public.
The, the easy way to change that is just to say that public comments are for, you can make any public comment you want unless there's a public hearing listed on the agenda. And then handle that during public comments. Just, that, that would be the change I would do, just on the agenda. This is simple. If you have anything, comments on anything, and because I think, uh, Marissa Jacobs has commented many nights on items on the agenda during her public comment. Like I said, I've been very, what? Yeah. I've been very flexible on that. But just because, you know, public comment's important. Mayor, that's probably a good idea to explicitly state that. Yeah, but if it's on a public hearing item, then it's, that's fine. And I have. Can we update that on the agenda, what we used to say previous to COVID? Yeah. I used to read it straight from there.
Yeah, I, I remember that.
And I have a few other observations. Um, one, I'm uncomfortable with limiting, uh, public comments to three minutes. I don't think you can develop an idea sufficiently in three minutes. Uh, it's generally five, the standard is five, so I would leave it at five. And, uh, and then on, uh, section 2.04050, maybe, Peter, can you explain why we, we're deleting that?
Sorry, which, can you say which one that is again?
Uh, on, on page four.
So.
2.04.050.
That's the one that got a lot of discussion last time, so that as far, as far as the conflicts, the interests go, if you look at 2.04030. So, that is written, it's substantially shorter than what the legal.
No, I'm talking about 04, 0.050 on page four.
50.
So page four, down the middle, toward the middle?
Well, council authority and delegation.
Um, right, so. Um, the reason that I recommended deleting that is because, um, the way that I read it was to cede your authority to a single councillor. So, um, that in which case such councillor shall have such authority has been expressly delegated by the council. So essentially your, I mean, and you can interpret this however you want and, or tell me that I'm wrong, but my concern is that if someone said, well, we're going to let, we're going to have, you know, this councillor work on the park. That the way that, or any other issue that, that the way that would interpreted, be interpreted is that you're actually delegating your authority as a council to that.
Well, let me use, uh, the Centennial as an example. So we, we, the council selected Pete to organize this, uh, gruesome activity went through. And so, you know, I, I think we're kind of hamstringing ourselves if we eliminate those kinds of options for council.
We can, we can certainly put that back in. Um, you have the ability to form an ad hoc committee and I think that's what, that's what you did with the Centennial is that you, um, asked staff to work with the ad hoc committee and then Pete was tasked with kind of chairing, chairing that committee.
Yeah, anyway, I have a concern about eliminating that particular element. And then the, the next, then the next item is on page five and it's, it's just a semantic thing. Uh, consensus implies that everybody agrees and so I'm not sure we want to be in that situation on 2.04100.
I would just leave a majority of the vote.
Which one is it?
Uh, two point zero four point one hundred, middle of page on page five.
Yeah. Um, that was just sometimes the mayor will say, do you guys want to bring something back, or do you want to do that? And then you as a council kind of say um sure. If we can, we can, we can do it a little more formal.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're you the more, you know, the more explicit you are, the better you are for for certain situations. And then the last item I have was uh the sentence down, uh, sentence B. Why did we line out approval of prior minutes?
Because there have been meetings where you haven't actually approved minutes. So for instance, when Susan was out and Huell was working for her in her spot, he wasn't producing those minutes every time. So you and then you'd come in and you'd approve multiple minutes all at once.
Right.
So that's so we're just giving you the flexibility that you don't have to approve minutes at every meeting you.
Right, may maybe maybe use the word ordinarily or something like that, just so you have that as as a again, as a concise language.
It's for.
This one.
Yeah. Uh, approval of prior minute.
All right.
So uh statutorily, your requirement, so statutorily, your video meets your minute meeting requirements. So um, but Susan does just actually use her written minutes as an example for how who does Susan, because I have I have gone to different counties and cities with her minutes to say, this is really kind of the gold standard, and it makes it really easy for um people to understand exactly what happened without going through the video. Statutorily, we meet our obligation um with the video. Uh, the reason this came up is because um when people that are less experienced with writing minutes than Susan is, it can be really difficult. Um, and so sometimes the minutes will stack up. And so my concern was if there's a if there are other ways that staff really need to spend their time and that it's obligation that that the minutes from the prior meeting would be need to be ready and adopted. That I felt we were within, we were, we were good in that we had the videos available and they were up on the website. We met our statutory requirement.
Well, that's that's predicated on the notion that you can understand and hear the video.
Right.
Oh, so there's there's a problem there if you can't hear the video. And oftentimes I listen into it and I can't hear half the stuff that's said. Um, and so again, you know, so I'm I'm not, I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
We can, I mean, again, these were, these are merely our recommendations. It's you guys get to decide whichever rules you want as a council.
Does, so on minutes that Joel's bringing up. They don't, is it possible that I just have the language where the minutes need to be approved at some point within the next in case we run into what we just ran into? Not at the next meeting per se, if there's exigent circumstances that prevent it from being done.
And we we tried to, we tried to address that in two point zero four point one four zero. So we said the city meets its statutory obligation by recording council meetings and making the video available to the public. Written meetings, if prepared, and I did not realize we were having those video issues. Um, obviously, we'd want that taken care of, but um written minutes, if prepared, shall describe the following. And so that was, that was to give staff some more, again, all the changes that we made were based on real world examples where Alex and I kind of went through the rules and then thought, okay, maybe either maybe we should add some flexibility or the statutes have changed since the last um you know, time that these have been reviewed, but we can, you can adopt any of these suggestions or not, any of them.
Thank you, councillor Miller.
So would an alternative be where it says um and crossed out approval of prior minutes, just add if prepared, so it's consistent with two dash zero four one four zero?
Yeah.
And that's based on the context or the example where Susan was out for a little while and we just didn't have any minutes, because that's what I, that's what I um am am hearing that that's what the concern is. So if we just put in there approval of prior minutes, if prepared, like we have in one four zero, would that address the issue for everyone?
That would, that would solve that problem.
Our councillor, Hogan, is that?
Joel.
What, does that address your concern?
Uh, yeah, yeah. So my turn? Uh. Over 22 years, I cannot recall a single situation where we needed the city manager to call meetings. It's always been the mayor or three council members. I, this is the legislative part of the body, and it actually creates good communications between the city manager and the mayor to indicate why a meeting is being called instead of, oh, by the way, I'm having a meeting at this time. Um, the other frustration I had from the past is that is there a way when council calls a meeting that it's specific that the time, place and manner of that meeting is decided by some, like the the mayor or something, because we had a situation where they called an eight A M. meeting on a day that no one was going to be able to make it. And I just think that's inappropriate, and I just don't think that, I think calling the meeting and then it must be a emergency meeting within a certain amount of time. But time, place and manner, I think, should be set by either the mayor or or something. It just doesn't, it it was frustrating to expl try to explain to the media and citizens why we were having an eight A M. meeting the day after New Year's e or New Year's Day, which was a.
They, they called the meeting, who were you?
Council members, three council members.
So three council members.
Yeah. And I'm just saying that because that when we were going through that issue, every single day, set a day and time for the meeting, and it just, I found that to be a little inappropriate, because sometimes if you start negotiating the day via email, then you're having a meeting about the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that we could work in some language that says um you know, that that meetings will be held at um, you know, seven or six P M. and then we can, we can build that into this to make sure that.
I but I can understand like a special meeting, but an emergency meeting I can understand. So like in the 96 flood or the two thousand eight, I think, eight? Or non young snow, the when it flooded. That time, we called in an emergency meeting that was like in the afternoon. There's times when you have an emergency meeting at a certain time. There's times when you have a special meeting at a certain time, like hiring the city manager, having to have a full day. But there isn't a time to call a special meeting at a ridiculous time that the community can't access.
Maybe if they were to coordinate with the city manager on the time and place of the meeting, um, then that would hopefully eliminate that.
I was the city manager at the time, too.
Well, that makes.
I don't, I don't understand the need to add the city manager to calling meetings. Emergency, because so say something happens to me. You can call three council members, say, we need a meeting, or it'll default to Megan as the council president, you know. I just don't see the, I mean, I would even put in the absence of the mayor, which means in cap, you know, I'm not capable of calling the meeting that the council president would do it, but I I don't understand the need for, you know, we always talk about administrative role and and legislative role and process, and we're the legislative role. And the other side's admin.
We can, I mean, we can certainly strike that language. I think that if there truly is an emergency, the idea would be that however efficiently that could be called, um, we would want to do that.
In 22 years, I've never seen it where I didn't get a call or the previous mayor didn't get a call.
Yeah, I mean, the, we don't want to have emergency meetings.
Oh.
I mean, we don't even like to have special meetings because we want to give members of the public as much notice as possible so that they can meaningfully participate. I think that in looking at it, and I think we pulled this uh, language from the league. Our our thought was that giving you guys maximum flexibility if there is an emergency rather than like in a situation where cell service is down um, and and something is being broadcast on the radio, um, that were emergency um system, that that would be a way to call a meeting where the city manager could call a meeting where they might not be able to get in touch with councillors via cell.
Wait. And and that's why my lean on that is truly that if mayor's incapacity means you can't get in contact with them, you can't, you know, they're not their cell phone's down, that that's why we have a council president and that then would fall on her for, you know, and still, the city managers.
They can't get a hold of me. My cellphone won't work. Their cell, so you can't get three councillors then, nobody's.
So but then how do you contact the council to have the meeting?
Saying broadcasted on public radio.
Assuming I was listening to.
Drive to your house. I don't know.
Well, so you could do that.
Yeah, go knock on.
And scampus with any one of us.
I I think that the problem, I'm guessing, because I didn't read the league's model rules, but um.
Phone chain.
The the resilience, so the resilience initiatives around tsunamis on the Oregon coast have ham radios. And um, they also have what are called SERC teams, which are members of the community that that are responders, and the idea is to build resiliency throughout the Oregon coast so that they have that sort of ability to communicate in the event specifically a tsunami. So the idea is if a tsunami happened and cell towers get taken out or people lose coverage that via this the ham radio and there's a network of ham radio operators and cities are investing in that infrastructure, that that's how they would be able to communicate to the community at large. So it may it may be that, you know, that's, that was the idea is that if there was an emergency, nobody could find the mayor and the city manager needed to get word out. Um, so honestly, you know, if we truly are in that sort of scenario, prob people probably aren't going to be paying attention to publicly noticing of that meetings or whether the council rules have been, you know, explicitly followed, as long as a quorum of you are able to show up and the public knows that.
And the the phones are down, more than likely electricity is down, so how many people are actually getting that kind of communication?
I mean, hopefully a lot, that's the theory of investing in the ham radio technology is.
Although, yeah, the ham radio, but I mean, over the radio waves. I mean.
I think what I'm hearing is we just strike the words or by the city manager.
I would, I wouldn't mind seeing something where the under limited circumstances that the council president can do that.
So. It does say too that um in the mayor's absence.
Yeah. Yeah, that works. It it the time of the meeting, I think time, place and manner is really important for transparency reasons and public, so like on emergency, special meetings. You know, emergency meetings could happen anytime, but a special meeting, if it's not noticed a certain amount of time out, it shouldn't be allowed to be eight A M. in the morning or some ridiculous time where 70% of the people in this community commute out of the community to go to work and their participation is nil.
Sections do talk about method of.
Well, I just time.
Or just saying.
Something that says time, place and matter will be set. Uh, some some structure around that so that sorry, I'm regurgitating one of the most frustrating eight weeks of my life, so.
No trauma at all there.
None, none. Um.
Should we say that the the council can call the meeting, but the city manager sets the time and place, or the mayor sets the time and place?
Yeah, either.
As long as you have, as long as you're able to get work, I mean, as long as it happens within a time period.
Yeah.
And if you're able to say, we're going to have it at seven in the evening on a Thursday, um, or Alex is able to pull the council and say, we're going to have it on seven in the evening on a Thursday. It seems like that would take, that would eliminate that. People like scheduling one at six A M. because they figured, you know, a couple of councillors might not show up.
Or or the other one during that time was seven P M. the night of homecoming.
I mean, this, this sounds like um.
You're.
Yeah, I wasn't staffing that council yet. I came in like two months later and boy, was that fun.
We 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 met a couple of weeks after that.
Yeah, we can, we can.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think maybe we should punt this to the next meeting and let the revisions, so we can all read what we're talking about here. We're on the same page and then.
And we, yeah, can we go ahead and continue this first reading to the next meeting?
Mm hmm. Your rules explicitly allow you to.
All right, well, so I will continue this meeting to the, this discussion to the next meeting, so we can get, looks like we got a bunch of uh input. And we can look it over and see how we feel. Joel just didn't want to be here all night. All right, moving forward, new business. Uh, the Grabhorn Park Ad Hoc Committee recommendations, Ms. Hines, welcome.
Hello. Please click it. Good evening. My name is Cara Hines. I am the chair of the Parks and Rec Committee and of the Grabhorn um Ad Hoc Council. Um, we we are able to come to several final agreements um on August 19th. So these next few slides are all of the agreements that we came to unanimously. The first one is that the road has no place in the park and should be eliminated from consideration in the future park. Some of our reasonings are that the road has been highly contested by many of the citizens surrounding Grabhorn and Veterans Park. The proposed road would go directly through the Veterans Dog Park, and after exhaustive study, there is not another suitable dog park location in the city. Protection of the critical root zone is also important to us, uh, surrounding the incense cedars on an adjacent property. Um, so adding in the road would place the um, if we were to protect the critical root zone, would place the road forty eighty, forty to eighty feet into the park and significantly limit options for park amenities. Number two, the dog park should stay at Veterans with the possibility of future expansion if feasible. Fifty nine point seven percent of our post forum forum survey respondents preferred to keep the dog park at Veterans Park. Currently, ten to twenty dog owners use this park at a time, indicating that this is a very popular amenity overall. The park is currently half an acre with an ideal size being one to two acres for the large park, which house, which um is a is a place for the large dogs and then a quarter acre for the small park for the small dogs or the undersocialized. Number three, a softball field should be included at Grabhorn Park. And a softball field with turf and lights should be included at the Grabhorn parcel if feasible with environment and budget concerns considered. A soccer field should be included at the Grabhorn parcel. And a soccer field with turf and lights should be included at the Grabhorn parcel if feasible with environment and budget concerns considered. Field use for youth recreation in Scappus has been limited by the sharing of fields with other sports and athletes, weather, daylight and condition of the fields. To maximize field use, the G pack recommends turf and lights to increase usability and the soccer and softball fields do not overlap. Since the pool is off the table, we believe that there should be enough space to be able to have them separate. Number seven, a combination full basketball and pickleball court as a secondary priority, provided that parking and space is sufficient, should be included at the Grabhorn parcel. We did want to make it clear that we wanted our first priorities to be the softball and the soccer fields. Pickleball was a a regular amenity that was also highly requested, so we think that if there is space, this would be a great fit. And then the option of having a basketball and pickleball com combined court, I think, would be a great way to maximize our space. Next picture, this is um eh, just an example of of how uh we would have a full basketball court in combination with pickleball court.
The putting greens aren't included.
I believe this is actually someone's backyard, which is very impressive, but uh putting, no putting greens. Amenities and accessibility for all ages and abilities should be included at the Grabhorn parcel. Potential amenity suggestions include workout equipment along the trail, natural play, ADA accessible play equipment and benches, picnic tables. ADA accessible play equipment and benches, picnic tables. Um, regularly um, natural play often comes up that we'd like to see some natural features of playground equipment. But also scappus, um parks are highly lacking ADA ADA accessible play equipment. And so if that is an option, that is something that we would also like to see. Interpretive signage should be included along the trail. We wanted to leave it open um and not necessarily um page and hold the options, but some um. Signage suggestions have been the role of the scappus creek in the greater watershed. Identifying nearby plants. Uh, identifying nearby wildlife and understanding the role of wetlands in general. Committee recognizes the need for additional parking, however, the committee would like to see that it does not affect usable space as much as possible. And to keep in mind the critical root zone of the incense cedars along the western edge of the Grabhorn parcel. And twelve, that we agreed to submit these recommendations to city council. For additional, I I would like to pause here, actually, do we uh any? Thoughts, questions, concerns?
Just.
I do.
I do.
Okay.
Good. Good.
Yeah.
The mayor.
Cara.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say on behalf probably of the entire council, but thank you very much for all the work that. You and the committee put in, I know that it wasn't just. One meeting a month or two meetings a month, but you guys broke out into subcommittees. And did a ton of work and research on this project and it's greatly appreciated because it. Really dove deeply into what we needed and. Including the future, I saw on the last page, you know, recommendations of buying other properties and whatnot, but. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Well, first of all, I'd like to second what the mayor just said, I know it's not an easy task and you've done a great job with it.
Thank you.
I had two things, first of all, I really like the idea that you, we don't. Your suggestion is if at all possible not to overlap the softball field with the soccer field, you know, uh. I know one of the problems was uh that our public works uh. It's a big elevation difference between the roadside and the the Veterans Park side. But it seems like there's some way to work around that and maybe Hugh will have some ideas on that or. I do think if there's, the space is there to do it, uh, but the elevation was the problem. It might mean we need to put some extra money into retaining walls, but we're looking at a long term investment here.
Right.
Uh, and overlapping softball and soccer is just not a good idea in my opinion.
Well, I I think that one of the things that really came out through all of this process was. Well, isn't there a field here? It's like, well, yes, there's a field here, but we share it here and then therefore we can't play in this season. And then, oh, there isn't there a field here, here, yes, but we can't use it here, and so I think. If we really don't want to just run into the same exact same issue again. Then I think that we should really consider again doing it, putting the extra dollars in and doing exactly how we want to. So that we can maximize usability of these fields.
So is this a comparable acreage to Veterans Park?
The top of my.
It's pretty close, I think.
The top of my head, I I would, I think it's pretty close, I think Veterans Park is slightly larger.
I think Veterans is sixteen and.
Quite a bit larger than.
Yeah.
Okay, so. It's so, so we've got, we have definitely have room for both softball and soccer that don't overlap, okay, good. Yeah, I, my idea, we need to retain a wall to keep it, you know, so, okay, so that's already taken care of. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I really like that you have pickleball, pickleball court in there, of course, uh. But I don't see any fence around that. Uh, and uh, I don't see how it's workable for a full court basketball court and have a pickleball court plopped in the middle of it. I don't see how that usage is, you can share that. And really, you can get three pickleball courts in the size of one tennis court, not two tennis courts, one tennis court. Uh, actually, you can get four of them, but three works better. Uh, and so as far, I know this is in the final design or anything, but I do think that that's not a workable plan. You're playing pickleball, you have to have a fence around the court, uh, and uh. If it's plopped in the middle of a basketball court, I can see it's, well, it's a beautiful court and I like the idea. Uh, but I see kids wanting to play basketball, kids want to play. Others wanting to play pickleball and and not being, uh, you know, it'd be hard to reach an agreement. Might have to say between certain hours, certain things, you know, but.
Yeah.
If we can avoid that, it's better.
And I think we're very comfortable with um, you you know, learning, learning these things along the way and. And when we made those decisions, we knew that those, that we had limited space and that those were two very popular amenities. But um, I would say that there is lots of opportunity for basketball, but not for pickleball. So I I I think that if we came to find that out, that we would be very comfortable with that.
You'll find is those pickleball courts will be full. Every minute, every day, and it's not raining.
Based on the.
Sometimes that there will be.
You want, you want a shelter on top of it too. Is that you want a shelter over it too?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's.
Counselor President, Grayson.
Uh, just to piggyback off of Counselor McHugh, I. Was a bit alarmed to see the basketball paired with the pickle, um, not that, you know, I totally appreciate the ingenuity, you know. Inventiveness of the space that we have, but was there any discussion about just painting pickleball lines on the current tennis court?
So that was um, that was something that we had also discussed um was. At with, within the Parks and Rec Committee and outside of the Grabhorn parcel. Would we, in the original master plan, I believe it was discussed that there, that um, that they, eventually there would be additional um. Tennis courts at the middle school.
Yeah.
And so would that be something that we would be able to petition as the Parks and Rec Committee? And if so, would we then be able to use dual tennis courts and pickleball courts? Um, at the uh, with within this meeting, we recognize that it was a very popular amenity, and so if there is space, we wanted to see if it could be included.
I appreciate you listening to the feedback and giving any option that you could think of, you know, to include it, thank you.
Just to speak to the tennis part of it, uh, the uh, the school district does still have plans to add two more courts, they're not. Prominent in their planning, but that is part of the original, uh, would there be two more courts? Just to the north of the current courts and there is room to do that. Uh, but at this time, there's not funding for it. So if one of the courts was be to be made into pickleball courts, uh, then it would uh. Compromise. Better being able to use that for for tennis, but. Till that happens, you know, rarely are there two people, two groups playing on those two courts at one time and. Might be something that's quite feasible to do and then. At such time that we need uh, the the courts for a tennis team, uh, then change it, it's relatively easy adjustment to make.
Yeah.
Of course, have to be refinished anyway, so before they're good enough to play uh, tennis on.
Yeah, and I, and as um, you know, as we continue on um, now that the the G pack has uh come to an end. I know that is absolutely a goal, the Parks and Rec is to really dig deep into um. Available fields, just as the city council has been working with the school district to like really get a good understanding of that so that we can be really inclusive with our designs. And maximize our space as well.
You do know that the sign in front of the, on the tennis courts there says uh, dual uh. To cooperation between the city of scappus and the scappus school district that these courts have been ma- maintained. Really, the city paid for most of the 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 last refurbishing of the courts, so.
Eighty, I think we paid eighty thousand. Counselor Selsky.
So a point of clarification in regards to. Uh, the development of the space with field use.
Yes.
Both the softball and the uh soccer field. My understanding is code would allow for. Infill, cut and fill for leveling out the current property based on the, I guess, restoration of the creek. Is that how we would be able to better develop usable lands in the Grabhorn property?
I I mean, I think, I wish um. Wish Laura was here, but uh, our our cup fill balance ratio with the city is. Very limiting as far as what we can do. And so as far as the, we would have to take a look at how that that grading could happen in order to do that, there's a pretty. I mean, we we had some pretty big retaining walls for the pool and um. On the northern side of the pool because that's a pretty steep elevation drop right there, so exactly how we could get it leveled out. Uh, allow a. Softball field and a soccer field, I'm I'm not quite sure.
We had preliminary engineering done on exactly that already, so we know it's possible. But yes, that is, the cup fill balance that we have to adhere to is definitely limiting. And a lot of that property, you know, it, some of it's going to be in the floodway versus floodplain, but. Because of that preliminary engineering we had done, we know that those fields are possible, yes, they will have retaining walls, yes, that increases the price. There are things to consider, et cetera, but.
We've already done.
Correct.
A limited amount of engineering to understand what our capabilities would be, so.
Right.
These recommendations would fall in with the potential opportunities of you.
Right, so what we would do is we would go back, you know, we would need to amend, obviously, those studies based on whatever council chooses to to do. And the other thing too would just simply be to take some of these items and say, you know. Do these items work at the site, can they all fit together? You know, that kind of thing, just those logistical considerations. Again, because the pool is out of the equation, that certainly helps a lot because that was a very usable piece of the site. So definitely helps. Um, and then obviously the other big consideration too is just if you've got, you know. Two fields and they are separate, so you can actually have two games at once, you're just going to need that much more parking. That would be a big thing too, I think we need to consider.
Other one.
Go ahead.
Uh, Cara, you had indicated or the committee had indicated that on the fields that if it's economically envi- environmentally feasible, could you maybe just shed a little bit of background or insight on why that was suggested?
Yes, absolutely, so economically, uh, it's obvious that turf fields initially, there is um, it's, there's a large cost. However, um, just cost over time and just with the. Regular use of the fields and just how. Fast that the fields wear out within the seasons, um, it could be really beneficial to invest in those fields. Um, environmentally, there is, so within turf, there are small rubber pellets. Um, and so that is something that, you know, if it floods would um, you know, are there concerns that the the rubber pellets would make its way into the creek? Now, we did have a contractor who specifically builds sports fields come out and view the site. And he said that there are actually many environmentally friendly options out there now, so instead of pellets, they have. Um, he listed off several suggestions, but Aldo Pitts was one of them, like, there is just so many different things out there. That could be much safer on the environment, and so we just wanted to ensure that those things would be considered.
You.
Good.
Are there, are there phases of development that the ad hoc committee are recommending or is this more of a? Here is our final recommendations, decision is now back at the table for you.
Um, we, we had discussed phasing, but for this, we would like to begin with the least invi- uh, or with like the the lowest impact. Um, so we thought that the trail would be an easy place to start adding signage and. We understand that. The fields may take time, um, and if we don't initially get this grant, then there's going to be funding. Um, that's going to be required before we can begin the fields, so. We didn't discuss like specific phases, but I think some natural phasing is going to occur.
Right. Um, I appreciate that the ad hoc committee highlighted ADA accessibility as one of the priorities. Um, I would just ask that our council and staff, as we work through the development of this. That it it is a priority so that we can create inclusive spaces for all of our community members to utilize. Uh. Lastly, I just want to say uh to your leadership and all of your colleagues that supported or committee members that supported in uh the process, I I definitely tuned in and did hear all of the. Time and effort and energy that put into this, and so I I applaud and thank all of you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just. I wrap up. When it comes to the Parks and Rec Committee, I. Uxton's a very attractive property, but I do want. The Parks Committee to kind of also be focused on parks all over the community so that they're parks closer to everyone. And there's great software online that. Ten minute walk to a park that. It, you can look at the city of scappus, where the parks are on and shows where there's good park areas and where it's lacking, it's great software, or it's a great.
Okay.
Thing and I'll email it to you.
That'd be fantastic, thank you.
Um, I just, you know, I know that this side, even though there's the schools, there's no parks, it's kind of lacks over there, once we get Vista Park built. Whole northeast side is kind of covered in parks. Um. What I'd like to see tonight actually is, I would love to see the council. Asha pass a motion to direct staff to develop a park based on these priorities. Or at least a park design based on these priorities, so we can see what it looks like.
Can I make a suggestion on that? So, and I was going to ask what our next steps would look like on this, would we put a motion to adopt? Um, the committee's recommendations and then have staff move forward with an engineering report, see what we could.
That's basically what I say is just direct staff to develop a park based on these priority designs.
I think we're, we might need some additional engineering and a better understanding of how all this.
Well, and that's why I just said direct staff to do that.
We will, I mean, there there's not really any question there, we will, we will have to go back to the engineering team and see. You know, how this would all fit together. Other thing, I think. I would just point out too is that depending on how long that takes could impact the grant process, so. You know, we'll go back to them, we'll see what we can do and um, I know we use three J in the past, so we can see about going back to them. Um, but uh, that will impact this somewhat, so we'll try to get. Try to get them back in and revamping this as quickly as possible. Um, well, yeah.
So.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, um, first I'd like to build on what you said, you know, the the. The time, energy and expertise of of the ad hoc committee and the Park and Rec Committee are truly extraordinary. And, you know, we need to recognize that, not just verbally, but I I suggest that. Uh, uh, the city put a quarter page ad in the spotlight uh commending uh this superior activity from the, and it's a good. It's a good uh way to uh convey our visceral thinking uh on uh on how much we appreciate what you did. And uh, if you would like, I'd be happy to make a a overture to uh adopt these findings. Uh, as as feasible uh for going forward.
Uh, just a. Counselor.
I I mentioned Hugh's name earlier and uh, so I wonder what kind of input you have for us, Hugh.
In in terms of.
Just in general of the presentation.
I I think the the committee has worked incredibly hard to come up with these recommendations and go through each of them in in a high level of detail. Um, and I know Cara, and I've told you this before, that we, that you were kind of thrown into this, but. Yet. You have have done a fantastic job and your leadership has helped the committee get to this point. Um, beyond. Beyond that, in terms of design or whatever the park looks like uh down the road, it's, I'm just excited to to see which direction it moves. And uh, that we end up with a, an end product that everyone uh in town is is proud of and and will be excited to go and visit.
It is our hope that the Parks and Rec Committee can be, can remain involved in this process. Um, uh, to speak to Hugh, this was, this was a big undertaking, um, and so I appreciate, I absolutely appreciate everybody's. Um, appreciation, um, but I also feel like, um, and you know, there were times when it, we kind of fumbled through and it was a little contentious and we went down some rabbit holes, but. I really feel like it opened up transparency and so much discussion and it brought a larger group of very passionate citizens to the table. Um, and so I would really love to to be able to continue to be a part of this, like as these developments occur, and that is the group consensus as well.
My assumption and my thought was that. Whatever is designed by, would get looked on by the eyes of the Parks and Rec Committee before it came back to council for final approval.
Right.
I assume that's the process. I know that time's an issue.
Uh, sure, I mean, yeah, there's no problem with having any committee, you know, the Parks Committee look at it, you all look at it. Um, just in terms of timing. Uh, I have no idea how long it's going to take for the engineering team to get this back going, so that's probably going to be the biggest question right now. Um, and then we'll bring it back, obviously, to both groups when we. So that's probably going to be the biggest question right now. Um, and then we'll bring it back, obviously to both groups when we have it.
If I may add one more, uh, thought, um, and I think with this discussion, it started the last time we met on the topic. There is still time to, to, to apply for that grant and, and get it funded hopefully. Uh, it, there's nothing that says we need to rush and get an application in this coming spring. Um, I know that they had increased the timeframe at which you could use the.
So we're still well within the window. There's no, um, I know that council wanted to preserve the option to go for the grant this coming spring. Um, there's nothing to say that we couldn't wait till a, the next grant cycle and still be able to use the purchase of the, you know, the purchase price of the property as the match, which would obviously be really crucial for us financially. So there is still time there. That said, um, what we would essentially want is a, you know, ten to 20% design for the grant is what we really ideally what we would want. So timing wise, it's, it's certainly not impossible to, to make that grant window. It's just going to be, you know, how smooth of a process is that? How long does it take to get the engineering team in place? And how many iterations do we end up going through is really going to be the question. So it's still possible.
I have a question. As I understand it, we can only use the purchase price, uh, for a match for the next two years. Is that right?
No, so they, they extended it. It used to be two.
Okay.
Now it's, I believe it's six. So that, that's why we were saying you actually have a little bit more time to work with than, than past years. They, they made that longer.
If we put it off another year, we'd still, if we didn't get the grant, we could, you know, recollect and, and.
So, right. So, so if we didn't, if we didn't get it, or if we just didn't feel that there was time, it, you know, that we had a design that everyone was happy with.
I just have a clarifying question. If we're making a motion to look into these suggestions, we are not agreeing that there will be a basketball slash pickleball court together. There will.
Uh, and it's, I think we're following.
Not, not be a road, that there will be not be a turf soccer. I mean, these, we're just looking into what they're giving us. It's not that we're committing.
We're not committing to any of the things that, the actual dollars, like if, like they say, if feasible. So it'll be considered. The engineering team might come back and this is how much it's going to cost.
Right.
And our eyes will go really big and then we'll decide whether or not we can go for it and get that type of grant. But, you know, the combination basketball pickle court, depending on feedback from, uh, Council McHugh, they're going to look at it and see, I don't even know if there's going to be space, depending on how we move everything around, but.
And that's exactly why we worded it as a secondary priority. And I think that feedback is really helpful that that may not be the best way to you utilize that space. And, and so I think that's, that's perfectly acceptable.
Back to putting greens and I'm just kidding. Yeah, but I, I just looked at it as, you know, these are tiered objectives. But, you know, here's the ones.
So I just have a question on that. Um, so I guess I'm not clear on how this looks going forward. So based on these recommendations, is that what we're given to the city manager and her staff to move forward with engaging the engineer? Cause what are we going to tell them? I mean, I'm trying to think in my head, what would I tell the engineering firm? I mean, if this isn't, are these the basis of what we're starting with or?
Correct. Yeah.
Yes. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with.
Yeah. So we would take these back to them, say, you know, well, how could this fit together? You know, what would be feasible, that kind of thing. You know, we, I'd want to talk to Lori and Chris, you know, how much parking do you think would be necessary for two teams, you know, two games to be going at the same time? If we're going to split these fields up, you know, how would people access the site? Could we fit this here or there? You know, can we, you know, how far can we push things towards the creek before that's going to be an issue because of the floodway? Those are the kind of the things we're, you know, going to have to look at and see how much of that we can actually fit on the site.
Okay, sounds good. Um, second question is, do you know in general how long it would take an engineering firm to come up with a preliminary, a first draft of this?
So, gosh, once they were actually working on it, it didn't take terribly long. I think probably the question more is going to be to get into their queue, so to speak. So how busy are they currently? Because what we're finding right now is that since there is so much ARPA money and other funds, you know, federal funds coming in, they're slammed. They're really, really busy. They have lots and lots of work. So it's just probably going to be more getting someone started.
Is it like a, a three to six month thing, six to twelve?
Once we can get in there, I mean, I, I think over the course of a month, we had different iterations and different things done. So once they're in doing it, it's not going to take that long. It's more about probably getting them scheduled. I think that's going to be more of the concern.
So that's more a question that we'll get more information once they contact the firm.
For me, I have a motion.
Counselor Haugen.
I move that council adopt the final G-PAC recommendations as feasible.
And direct staff to.
And direct staff to proceed with post haste.
Hearing a motion by Counselor Haugen, is there a second? Second by Counselor McHugh and Counselor Holling. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That's a, yes, I assume Josh.
Yes, it is.
Motion carries. That's okay. I forget that there's a delay for you. It's much easier when there's only one person voting online versus during the full shutdown. Let's go ahead and move forward. Resolution number 2115, a resolution updating the city of Scappus's cybersecurity policy. Mr. Whitehouse. Thank you, Kara.
You.
Thanks. All right. Just a minute. Let me pull up my notes here. Okay, Mayor, Council, before you this evening is Resolution 21 dash 15, uh, resolution, um, updating the city of Scappus cybersecurity policy. There's a little bit of, of background. This policy was adopted in May of last year. It was in response to some cybersecurity incidents that had occurred very close to Scappus. And, um, the city took it upon itself to in, ensure that, that we were doing everything that we needed to, uh, with our insurance provider, uh, to ensure that we could weather a cybersecurity incident. One of the requirements of that policy, uh, that is a model policy from our insurance provider, requires us to review and update if necessary that policy annually. And so we, city staff began a review of that policy earlier this year. Um, there were no changes to the actual policy, but there was one, uh, update that was recommended by our IT, contracted IT manager. Uh, and that is Appendix C, Incident Handling and Response Plan, uh, which it did exist in some form, uh, i- in the policy. However, the IT manager didn't feel it was thorough enough and wanted to have some consistency. The incident response plan that they have for the police departments, uh, IT infrastructure, which is held to a much higher standard due to federal law. I'm willing to answer any questions here that you may have. Uh, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Huel, uh, just to clarify, the IT manager's role, that is outsourced to a third party, is that correct?
Yes, it's a contracted position. It has been the same individual for quite some time.
Counselor Haugen.
Uh, Huel, the, uh, the only thing I caught was the, was the number of characters for an ID code. So I believe the industry standard is 12 characters. So I'm, I'm wondering what, what, why, why eight? An ID. I mean, like, you know, software developers, they, they, you know, licensing and so forth, they're generally a 12 character scheme. So I wonder if wouldn't be prudent to, uh, pump that up if, if called for.
It's a, it's eight, but it's the number of characters and the type of characters that plays a role. So there's a security, that's practices, like the CGIS requirement, an example, which, um, CGIS, criminal justice information system data.
Eight, eight characters sufficient.
It's a, it's, well, that's one aspect to it. And there's an uppercase, lowercase, a symbol. Those are the other things that bring complexity. Password.
Pass, password complexity, if you will, which is enforced policy of the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of disguised thing.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Losowski.
Yeah. Uh, I move council adopt Resolution number 2115, resolution updating city's scapus's cybersecurity policy.
Hearing a motion by Counselor Losowski, do I hear a second? Second by Counselor Haugen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. That was unanimous again. It was an aye by Josh. He's not voting against everything. Next item, 100 year event celebration video.
Yes, that's me. And I forgot that I logged out of this meeting. She sees it on your computer. Excellent. Great. Who, who produced that?
The, the event coordination company, Treadway Events. Um, I didn't know they were doing this. Isaac knew about it, but when he showed that to me, I.
Definitely.
Yeah.
All right. Oh, go ahead.
I would be curious, how can we, uh, promote that on our webpage or other outlets to share with the community?
Great question. Uh, so actually Isaac has uploaded it to our YouTube page as of today. Uh, and we could embed that somewhere on our website. Uh, I toyed around with a couple of ideas with him as to pictures and, and video and how we can incorporate that on the website, but still a work in progress, but it's something that he and I are both working on.
I, I would just add, I think media, media channels or communication tool like these, I, I would like to potentially look at, how could we do a, a, another type of video, not just around the centennial, but highlighting Scappus and how great of a place it is as a share to the world, let them know that we are here and, um, come and visit. Thank you for staff for sharing that video.
We, we, we have done, but we've, we had a failed video one time. And, and actually there's a really good, and I think if those port of St. Helens, because they hadn't changed their name yet, little, uh, memory sticks are still around. There's a audio cast about, uh, and it was back when, oh, eight, nine years ago. It was a little dated in some aspects, but it's, it was kind of a cool little uh, activity that we did with the city and had just a audio, kind of a documentary of the city. Talking to people in the community and it's really cool.
Two things, we still have the Facebook page that if you, Jeanette Santiago is the person that's been dealing with that. And, uh, uh, also we have a, a website is still up, but I think it might even be better to have less waters put it onto the, the, uh, history website. Uh, maybe a, probably on both of them. Except the S100 website probably isn't going to get a lot of looks after the centennial. But hopefully the history website will be something that'll, will be ongoing and love the length of that, you know, because it's really got to catch your attention, you know, and it's, uh, kind of captures what it was all about. So everybody did a nice job.
All right. Next item, discussion to cancel the October 4th, 2021 council meeting. And a hint to you guys that it's already been, the decision's already been made, but. Alex is just like. Pretty much there's a light agenda. We're going to have several key staff members that have pre-planned vacations. Uh, everything we can do, we can do at our next meeting and the meeting after that, that's on the agenda. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I agreed that we could cancel it. Our code only requires us to have one meeting. And everyone can have the very first week of October off and enjoy the last waning days of summer or the first days of fall.
I was really looking forward to meeting there.
Well, we could go to have coffee.
Okay.
All right. Oh, announcement's time. All right. I have no calendar. Normally different. Getting older. All right. Our next council meeting will be on Monday, September 20th with a work session at six o'clock, city council meeting at 7:00 PM. Scappus Saturday market is still going through the rest of this month, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM every Saturday. Our next economic development committee meeting is at noon on Thursday, September 16th. Our planning commission meeting is September 23rd at seven o'clock. On September 18th, we have the Out of the Darkness Walk at Heritage Park. And I believe it's September 12th is Counselor Tyler Miller's birthday. I just wanted to make sure he got recognized for his birthday.
Your birthday? When is your birthday, sir?
We, we, we don't discuss that.
Exactly. Worst of all place here.
Oh, yeah. This is Virgo to Virgo here. The mine is the 15th. So happy birthday, Tyler.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you. But one year, sauerkraut festival was on my birthday and there was a banner hung out that I didn't know about until I got there. It said, happy birthday. So.
It'll be in Mexico. Thank you.
Well, enjoy. Alex, do you have anything?
Um, so I did want to go ahead and, you know, recognize and thank the G-PAC committee members for all their efforts. And then, um, obviously he'll, he's here to introduce himself, but I did want to point out, obviously that we have our interim police chief here, Sean Davis. Um, he's been with us a short amount of time and he's doing a great job. We're happy to have him. And, uh, I didn't talk to you a little bit about his background, but just wanted to say, I think it's, uh, working well and, um, yeah, we appreciate you being here.
Is there anything? Interim Chief, uh, Davis.
Uh, Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, councilors. It's a pleasure to be here and it's an honor, uh, for me to be filling this role. And I look forward to working with, uh, the city while we identify a new police chief and also work with the community, any issues that come up. Um, or that have come up.
Thank you.
Counselor Miller.
Uh, thank you. Uh, one thought. So we, we get a lot of public comment and me when somebody shows up in public to address the city council about an issue, it means that it's really important to them. And the problem that I see is that we don't ever really hear or see what happens with that. So they, you know, they come in front of us, they tell us about their issue. Now, we don't really, most of the time, it seems like we don't really know what happened. Um, the graffiti one that came up, uh, last council meeting, I believe it was, is a, and it's an example of that. I just want to make sure that we responsive as a city council, uh, to the extent that we can, that somehow we actually get feedback on, if it's issues that are deferred to staff, that we get feedback um, on what happened, uh, with those, uh, concerns. There can be like a, I don't know if a tracking sheet is the proper way to say it, but if we can just, I just want to make sure that when citizens come in front of us to bring an issue up that's important to them, it doesn't just die a natural death right there. I mean, they took the time to come to us, obviously important to them. So I just think that, I feel like it's an obligation, my obligation as an elected official, to make sure that their concerns are heard and that we do everything. I feel like it's an obligation, my obligation as an elected official, to make sure that their concerns are heard and that we do everything that we can to address those concerns and, you know, sometimes we're not going to be able to, right, I get that. But I just want to make sure that we're following it through and that we have visibility on that all the way through until there's a conclusion on either something that we can do or something that we can't do.
That'd be something that's added to the staff report each meeting. Kind of, there's comments, things that were directed that, you know, staff's going to look into because from comments and that, that way it does fill that loop. And then if there's, you know, sometimes, I know sometimes, policy changes come out of them. It'd be nice if there's like just something that formally said, oh, and we changed this policy because, or we're bringing this to the council because of it.
This more or less a housekeeping item, I see it, just want to make sure that again, it doesn't just die at city council and nobody follows through with it, because I don't, I don't know if, I mean, do we have it established, okay, this is your responsibility to follow up on their graffiti issue, I mean, I just want to make sure there's follow through and accountability on these things that come.
So.
Uh-oh, Peter's phrasing.
I think it would be, I mean, it would be, sometimes it would be really helpful if, and the council rules are actually set up this way. If you could, you know, direct staff that you want them to do something. For instance, we had a gentleman that came in and made some public comments about fireworks. And he kind of came with an ask that the city look at a policy to ban fireworks and he had a variety of of, I mean, it was quite thoughtful testimony in my mind. And so it's, it can be hard for staff to know, do you want us to bring you something on that issue? Unless you, you tell us and, and the way your council rules are set up is, you know, this is a, is a unique one because it's, it's police. So it might be the police chief that's figuring out from a staffing perspective what might be possible, but for something like fireworks or something like graffiti, if you could just say to staff, you know, can we put this on the list or this should be a high priority, that kind of really helps them just know what, what you want to see brought back.
And, and you know, during, during the meetings, like when there's comments being made, I am taking notes and there are, you know, and I am following up on things, but I agree, with some of these larger issues that would actually necessitate some kind of policy change, would be helpful to get you as a body to say, you know, yes, please spend time on this.
For instance, street football, it would be another example of, no, that's, that's something that it's kind of complaint driven.
Thing I'm up next.
I was going to say, I think that's why it'd be nice to these were brought up and sometimes we're not taking the notes or it's in our notebook and then you leave them behind or whatnot and, but it would be nice to have a list that's, okay, here's meat of what these citizens commented on and it comes back the next meeting, oh, can we follow up on this or, you know, some way to so that we know, not only, not only do we know, but then when we see, you know, I walk in to buy the, some more videos.
Do you make that even part of the minutes? I mean, I know it's, I guess I know it's in the minutes, but you know, is there like, maybe just like a, like maybe make it a bulleted list or something like that?
Or just in the staff report would be fine, so when I'm looking through the staff report, oh, okay, what about that, I can bring it up or something, some way for me to you know, with so much stuff going on in everyone's lives, things slip through, it's nice to have that reminder put in front of you. Here's the list of things that have come up from, what comments, and here's what we can do about them if, you know, or the council can say, oh yeah, we had a lady come in here about the crime, we want to see something done about that, well, we kind of did it tonight, but you know, the graffiti or the football in the streets or the the other issues that come up, sometimes it'd be nice to do that loop mostly so that we can communicate back to our, the citizens of this community that something was done and it doesn't sound like it's falling on deaf ears.
Would you want staff to take action on every request or would you want to at the end of the meeting to, because I, I just want to make sure we understand the expectations, because some of these can take a lot of time to develop. So if, it would be great if you as a council could say, for instance, and I'll just use the firework one because that was, you know, recent. Would you want us to develop a draft policy, you know, on banning fireworks or would you want options on that, would that be a priority, would you want us to bring something back on street football? Because, you know, there, there would be things that might come up that wouldn't be a council priority and I wouldn't want staff to get.
We don't want to be chasing too many squirrels, I think, as well.
Right.
Focus their time and.
I, my only concern about that is kind of the optics on it, I mean, everybody that comes, if that's our going to be our, maybe we just need an S O P with at the end of comment, we just, I don't know, it's putting us on the spot too to make a decision right there. I almost, while I do think this time consuming, I'd be able to defer it until you get an assistant city manager, you know, because of the time issues. I we're not, we're not going to have the information to make a decision or properly direct somebody to do something right on the spot like that, so that's my only concern. I would rather, knowing that it's a staffing issue too and it's going to take labor, I, which I apologize, I know your plate's already full and like I said, I'm for me, I'm completely fine with waiting until you have an assistant city manager to help you with this. But for me, I think that every issue should be something that you address, I don't think that we should be attempting to address it or direct right at that point. I think that it should, if it ends up being that, no, you know, it's, it's not something that we can do and this is why, that's, you know, a short paragraph. What does, that's, that's the way that I look at it. I just feel like it's going to take a really, it's going to make a really awkward situation when people are there many, making public comment and then we're expected to then all of a sudden direct staff on what we want, I just don't see that going very well.
That's why I was kind of looking at like, just here's the list of what people said, here's what, here's some of your options if you're interested in pursuing. Some real high level and then, you know, with like police things, you can talk to the chief or whatnot.
I'm not saying that you get, I'm not even, I wasn't even suggesting that you give like a full brief on it, just like a resolve or followed up with or just like a, you know, a short, just, I mean, I trust staff, you know, that they're doing the right things, they just so that we know that it didn't fall through the cracks, it's not, it's not like a trust issue or anything, it's just more of a, hey, did we forget or did we not forget to follow up on this issue?
I was looking at it as more so that if I see the people ask me about that issue from outside the community that I have an answer.
That's a good point.
That I, that I have an answer for them and not kind of a blank stare, oh yeah, we did talk about that and let me see if there's anything in my email or.
So Scott, Scott, you know, maybe to simplify this is that in the staff report, as he suggested, let's use tonight as an example. The break-ins, the three A M. break-ins, the street football and the graffiti, those three examples, those three bullet points. You say, just put those on right at the top of the, of the staff reports, one resolved, two, it's a policy issue and three, and so we can follow up then if we need to. It's a simple, direct and efficient way of doing it.
And it's not, yeah, it's not like, distrust it so that we have the information that something came before us, we can get that information out of someone else, because more likely if one person said it, somebody else is saying it.
Just, just to clarify though, but like for instance, for the street football, he was asking for a code change in his email, so is that something you're actually wanting us to prepare or do you want us to send an officer down and say, hey, you know, stop playing so often, you know what I'm saying, like this is, this is all I mean, I just want to be clear as to what you're wanting from us, so it, like in this specific instance, right, I mean, he really wanted us to actually go back and change the code to say you can't play football in the street ever. That was his request.
Yeah, again, I.
Well, I, I understand, I think what we would like is for the, we ask for follow up on something, then leave that up to you guys as to what you think that follow up should be. You know, because we don't necessarily know, but in the case of the street football, my opinion, you know, I played a lot of street football as a kid, but this something needs to be done there, you know.
Right.
Because see, we got a bunch of bullies out there playing football and they're intimidating our, our people in our neighborhood, sure this is going to come up later, but I just think, you know, you guys take it from there and just report back what you think should be done. If we, if they do anything about it, then we have to change the codes and we have to do that. That's my feeling anyway, but I do think some of those really do need follow up, which I think you guys normally do, sometimes we have to ask for it, but you know, like Joel said, I think that's a great, simple way to do it.
Alright, it's still on councillor Miller's comment.
In the instance of the street football thing, I mean, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole here on debating an issue, but I always feel the path of the least heavy-handedness, so to speak, is the best route, I think that that issue should be deferred to the police department because my guess is that they're probably just going to go contact them and talk to them and say, hey, there's some complaints here, you guys, you know, taking it elsewhere, that's always where you should really start with those types of things, I.
Well, and, and actually we already met about it today.
Yeah.
Chat about it.
I'm sure that's probably, you know, where you guys probably would have went with it first, I don't know that it's always necessary to jump into changing food and stuff, sometimes it's a simple conversation with people does.
I would agree and I think, you know, I think the way the code is written gives us the latitude to stop those games anyway, I think that's why it was written the way it was written. But, but again, it's just more of a point of clarification, because that's what he was asking for in an email, code change.
Yeah, do we have a document that you or your predecessor or the previous chief has signed that is allowing them to play football?
No, not that I'm aware of, we actually talked about that today.
So.
Checked with Norm.
That's my understanding as well, so as the code reads, you're able
Correct.
To stop the game as it happens. In this case, you know, we could speak to that, the complainer, complainy and say all us, be happy to come over and have a chat while they're playing their game, this is not, you know, per our code, this is not allowed. Get in with councillor Miller, just, the idea of community policing and just checking in, you know, you don't need to come in and brute force on anyone or anything like that, but.
Yeah, they could, they could go in and.
Thank you for following up with, with Steve on that. I had a question for you, welcome to the team, so happy to have you. Really thrilled to have you here. Got a lot of work for you, so thank you. In the instance, I had mentioned previous, in, in the, earlier in the evening about people that are right on the cusp of city limits and they're in the county and they're making a phone call. That goes to dispatch and they put it out and whoever can get there can get there.
I think it all depends on what the call might be.
Sure.
If it's an emergency, absolutely, the closest cars will go.
Sure.
If it's maybe like a code violation that doesn't pertain to us, likely or not, we won't respond to that because that's, you know, or with some sort of code call, so.
I'm just going to stop right there, because it's exactly what she's talking about and there are, there are owners of businesses that are literally jumping on cars as people are running away, fleeing the scene, they're, they're, you know, trying to hold down the, the people that are robbing them, they're essentially becoming rogue police officers because they're, they're saying, when I call, nobody comes or they come and it takes twenty minutes, so by that time, they've stolen whatever they've stolen and I've pinned them down myself and I'm ready. So is there a way that we can go back and look at response times or is that something that we often have discussions with, with other jurisdictions like sheriff that's helping us or us, I just want to make sure that we're going back and being reflective on situations.
And I could look at response times through dispatch.
Okay.
Again, it's all depends on, if someone calls and we're not on, it goes through.
Sure.
They've already been given certain criteria and I don't know exactly what those crimes are or what the call priority is, but certain calls are deferred to wait to the A M. to deal with, so it's a priority though, there we will respond, so we have officers that are, do live in the city or around the city and it's a rotation basis, so we will respond if we get a call, need certain criteria.
And as a chief, not that you're under interview or anything, but you find teachable moments that can happen when you can go back and review who did what and have those conversations with officers and talk about how to make it better than it was before and.
Well, absolutely, and it's, it's all depends on what information we're giving, what was given to dispatch and dispatch given to us.
Sure.
So yes, it's all a teachable moment and we can look at that if we public came in, we could also educate the public on what the, maybe the priority is.
That's what I'm looking forward to is public education on what resources we have and what we're able to do, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to be careful here with how so we do need clarity on, you know, was it two, I don't even want to bring that up, at the time that you guys go off duty what the call out criteria is and are we always making sure that an officer that is on call is within so many minutes of city limits? Those are things that I'm thinking of, but I also don't want to publicly announce also what institutes a call out if it's after hours and.
That's correct, and then we also have strategies that I, prior to this meeting, I just learned from one of the sergeants too that we've done previously and so I'm looking about adopting some of those too.
And I don't, you've probably already been told, but this scanner app is a huge issue. I mean, every terminal that does batter on here has a scanner, they know what time these go off, I mean, it's, it's a big issue and that's a solution to that and hopefully we'll get.
That serves in a cryptid channel, that's everywhere.
Right, yeah.
I just wanted to thank you for looking into concerns and, and being reflective and working with the officers that we have to do the best that we can with what we have, thank you.
My only comment is that I, I think council and the city needs to do something special for for Pete McHugh for his incredible work for the centennial, I don't know what that is, but we need to do something special for him.
I feel enough to have it over with, that's.
That's the feeling whenever you put an event on.
Yeah.
Huge burden lifted.
Council LaSowski.
To our local residents, our property owners, our business owners, I would like to just share that we are aware of the transitional time that is taking place in our community. And we are working diligently to overcome these challenges. We ask for your patience and support and understanding during these times, but it hurts my heart to hear that people are doing the activities that they're doing and it's not just to our business owners, it's to our residents, it's crimes that are being committed in our neighborhoods and I mean, all eyes on the street, I think that, you know, we as community members can be a part of the solution in, in community having eyes on the street, I don't want to say community policing is the goal of the citizen, but I do, I do want to assure you that we are addressing this and taking the strides to overcome these challenges, so please, please continue to have faith in, in the city and, and us that are helping make those decisions. With that, interim chief Davis, welcome. There, there's obviously a, a lot of opportunities for us to grow as a department. And we're very, very excited to have your leadership and to help support us through these times. As you can hear this tonight, there's a variety of different other, you know, from code violations of football games to, you know, crimes that are taking place that we, we definitely have a, a diverse community that you can work with, so we're, we're very excited to have you on.
Thank you.
With that, I just, to our community, continue to persevere, we are a resilient community, resilient people here in Scapoose and we will, we will continue to put the right foot forward to make this community the best community that we can, so thank you.
Well, I'd just like to repeat interim chief Davis, we're really pleased to have you on board and I know we're going to lean on your experience in the next few months to make some real progress with our police department, so I'm just real pleased you're part of our team. Also, at some point, I would like, you know, this works, I wasn't part of the downtown overlay, but I'd like to find out why the downtown overlay is where it is, because it doesn't make any sense to me. And so at some point in a work session or somewhere, I'd like to find out what the reasoning was for having the downtown overlay First Street. So, but I'd like to look at it again if we could and if you can convince me that's the right place to put it, but it seems it should be along Columbia Boulevard here, this is a much quicker access to thirty and looking at the backside of the post office and the big wall and all the, everything on the east side of First Street, so. Also, I want to thank council president Gryson and officer Josh Poland for putting together the letter in response to your tenors, the least skilled letter and presentation, I thought you guys did a really nice job in doing that and it was something I think that needed to be said, so thank you for that. We have talked about the one point six million dollars in the COVID relief fund and I would like to suggest that we set aside a work session, talk about that. And I would like to suggest that we set aside a, a work session, talk about that. I believe it's a wonderful opportunity for the city to do something really dynamic for this community. And I'd like to take a look at, oh, we spend that money and, uh, get some input from the community and put together a plan to figure out how we're going to spend that money. There's no hurry. I attended a webinar, the League of Oregon Cities, and it's rather unique funding system. We have until December, two thousand twenty-three, we have our plan together. We have until December, two thousand twenty-four to actually spend it. And what Mark Salt told us at the meeting, he says, the unique grant because you can put that money in the bank, you can collect interest on it. You can't do that with a lot of government, uh, programs. This one, he said, is unique. And so it really, he says, you really don't hurry in making a decision. So I just, hopefully we can put it, maybe even a series of work sessions. It's that important. It's a ton of money. So what I see is do something that's really favorable for, for our community. And that's it.
Councillor Polling, do you have anything?
Yeah. So first I would like to say, welcome, uh, interim chief Davis. I'm sorry I couldn't be there to meet you today, but, um, I am looking forward to uh, all your work and, uh, we, we've, we've got a lot for you. So, uh, um, I, I think that you'll, uh, be a good part of, of growing the community back together. So, um, and then, uh, you know, I also want to, uh, repeat what councillor Hoggan said. Uh, I think that, you know, we definitely need to do something for, uh, for Pete, I think he did a phenomenal job with the, uh, um, the centennial celebration. Um, and, uh, I cannot say enough how amazing of a job that was done there. So, um, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, so Alex, on the idea of the money, the leaf money, does it make sense that we, it might be easier for us to hash it through a work session, I think?
Sure. I mean, I think it's, uh, scheduled for the next meeting and we can, we can just call it a work session. It's.
Okay. And it might take multiple, but, uh, you know, I think hashing through that might be a good way to do it instead of in the formal setting of emotion and whatnot. So.
Other ideas, um, should we just chat with you about them in terms of? The, the big thing would just be making sure that they're actually allowable. Yeah, no, exactly. I just, so that if anybody has any other thoughts or ideas, they're sharing that with you so that for the work session, saying, hey, someone came to me about this. This is, we can chat about this or it wasn't feasible. Like with Peter, we can verify whether or not it's a allowable use and.
Some of it's counterintuitive.
Right. It's a little weird sometimes. Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. And so interim chief Davis, welcome aboard. It's a heavy lift we're asking you to do. We appreciate the fact that you're willing to come out here and and work on making sure that not only the neighborhoods are protected because that irritates the heck out of me. I don't know, but, uh, that you're able to help us rebuild and focus the police department and make it the best department that we could possibly have and, and, you know, envision. So looking forward to seeing what you can do and I'm excited. Thank you. Anything else? Being adjourned.